Good evening. I would like to bring the Marlboro School Committee meeting to order at 7:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So this evening, we have a lot of students with us. Yay! We love students. And we're going to start off with the MHS Advisory Committee, and we will have Jessica starting with us. Jess, just make sure the little green button's on. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you start, I need to make a disclosure that Mrs. Matthews is joining us remotely. We can see her and hear her, and she can see us and hear us. Thank you. Go ahead, Jess.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I am presenting for our senior representative, Rachel Schooler, who cannot be here today, so... Hi, my name is Rachel Schooler, and I am an SAC representative for the senior class. While I am unable to be physically present today, I would still like to report on the collaboration of student representatives and leaders thus far in the school year. It is my first year as a member of the Student Advisory Committee, but I know that it has been a past goal to increase the level of communication between student leaders and to create a level of transparency between the different groups of students at MHS. As we kick off the school year, I would say that there has definitely been improvement in the amount of collaboration between student leaders. On Thursday, September 15th, we had the first-ever student leadership meeting. During this meeting, student leaders from all grades who hold different leadership roles were able to discuss upcoming school events. We spent a lot of time talking about Spirit Week and how to go about this chaotic and competitive week in the most fair and orderly way possible. Having a meeting with multiple people representing many different things made creating new rules and ideas for Spirit Week much easier because we were able to consider how these new additions could impact people throughout the school. We also had the first Student Leadership Council meeting of the year on Monday, September 19th. These meetings give student leaders a chance to meet with Dr. Riley and discuss school events and occurrences. While Dr. Riley was unable to attend this first meeting, we were able to meet with Mr. Bishop and talk about student perspectives on different topics regarding school. These meetings allow all of us leaders to get together and inform each other and the principal about our specific opinions and things that are happening within each group that we represent, from captains in sports to class officers to leaders of the MHS music department. I think it is very important for student leaders to be able to communicate with each other and have these times where they can openly share their experiences. I think that we have been pretty successful in creating a more transparent line of communication between student representatives and the teachers and supervisors who advise us. There is always room to grow, but I would say that there has been a definite improvement in student leadership, communication, and awareness. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you, Rachel and Jessica.
Yay!
Any questions, comments? Okay, we're good. Next up, we have Risha.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Risha Candaria, and I am the junior class representative on SAC. Today, I'll be talking about an initiative that the Peer Leadership and Mentoring Club, led by Mr. Shane McGardle and students Crystal Alice, Elaine Ordones, Mata, and myself, have taken on. Along with providing a space for students to work on anything that is going on in their life, such as college applications and to study, we have taken on the initiative of trying to start up a community garden. As stated on Marlboro's Community Development Authority website, food insecurity in Massachusetts has nearly doubled since COVID-19. A community garden that can harvest various different foods can be distributed to many different sites with the goal of serving communities dealing with this food insecurity. The Marlboro Food Pantry, whose goal is to not only provide enough food for people in need, but also healthy and nutritious food, is one of those places. Not only can a community garden reduce food insecurity, but it also promotes healthy habits. Growing fruits and vegetables means more access to them, and studies show that when students know the process of growing these foods, they are more inclined to eat them. In addition, gardening involves a form of physical exercise. Gardening has also been shown to relieve stress and increase wellness. Community gardens allow students...
That's the same thing, and I can't see what's going on. Sorry.
Community gardens allow groups of people to come together and create something that will benefit many. It also provides for a learning environment for these groups of students. It allows for students to interact with basic characteristics of the environment in real life and learn how it all works. With all of these benefits to starting a community garden, we decided to bring a proposal to our principal, to our principal, Dr. Riley. We met with him to discuss this idea on Friday. We explained the benefits and agreed on trying to start this garden at the school level first. This idea still needs to be discussed with other supervisors, and we have to discuss the idea of using a space that we already have at the high school, the greenhouse. We want to start this with the goal of expanding at some point in the future. This is an idea that is easily scalable, especially by using resources that we already have in the community, such as the greenhouse. Something like this benefits people greatly, and the garden dovetails very much between the need to reduce food insecurity and our school and community goals of helping underprivileged families. There will be more to come soon, but for now, thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Actually, I have a question. So first of all, just so I'm clear, the greenhouse that is like on the second floor off the LMC kind of... third floor, but you see it from the entryway popping out. Okay. And then, do you have a plan like to get supplies? Are you going to get them donated? I mean, you got to get the dirt and the seeds and all that kind of stuff.
This is still a fairly new idea, so we're still working out the logistics. First, we want to get approval to use the greenhouse before we get into how we would get those materials.
Gotcha. Okay. I love it. Anybody?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Garner. I'm the sophomore class representative. Last year, I spoke to you about the lack of participation in extracurricular activities. We struggled to get my class excited about what our school has to offer, and because of this, we weren't a part of many activities and conversations. This year, we have taken some new steps to try and raise awareness of all the extracurriculars at the school. At the beginning of the year, we used four Panther periods to let each class go to a club fair. Here, they could walk around tables with each of the clubs introducing what they do and when they meet. Students walked around with their arms full of flyers and started to decide what clubs they wanted to join. While one grade was learning about the extracurriculars that we have at this school, another was in a class meeting with Dr. Riley and their designated vice principal and guidance counselors. Here, they introduced the school-wide rules and listed the sports and clubs for students again. The goal of these two events was to stress the importance of being involved in one of MHS's many opportunities. After these meetings, I have seen a jump in numbers in the clubs that I'm in. Students are joining what excites them, and in return, these clubs are full of people from all over the school who care about what the club does and who will actively participate in the club's activities. I have also found that this year, people who aren't a part of certain clubs are still paying attention and helping in ways that they can. I have found that for the sophomore class, fundraisers have had much more participation so far, and the class updates are being seen by more people. Ultimately, it's hard to say whether or not our school's efforts have worked, but we have seen progress in such a short amount of time within extracurricular activities.
Thank you. I'm excited to hear that you think there's more participation. I guess a question I would ask is, has there been any idea of like a potential survey out to the students to like, are there clubs that they'd like to be seeing? Or they'd like to start or something like that, so maybe you guys could get some feedback that could help you guys? You don't know?
There isn't a survey as far as I'm aware, but I do think it would be a good idea to sort of hear from the students what they'd want to see at the school.
Yeah, I just was thinking that. I mean, I think you guys have done a great job in trying to push it out and get some more, but I'm just wondering if getting some feedback might also help you guys to push it out even a little bit more or in different ways or something and understand about other activities that might pull some people in. Just an idea. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Atul.
Hello, everybody. My name is Atul Madour, and I'm the freshman SAC representative. This evening, I would like to share with you all some student perspective on our high school experience so far. First off, I would like to reflect on last year. We started off with masks, but got to see our friends after a long and exhausting year. We went to our first football games and really got to experience the school experience. Then after the masks were taken off, it was a real breath of fresh air. We got to see our friends like normal, and personally, it was my favorite years of school. Now, coming into high school, we're no longer the oldest. It feels quite weird. I'm used to seeing the small sixth graders, and now it's like we are the smallest. One big change from middle school to high school is Spirit Week. In middle school, it really wasn't a big deal, but now it's a large and competitive event. Last Tuesday, we got the results for Spirit Week, and they are Soccer Mom vs. Barbecue Dad on Monday, Decades Day on Tuesday, Canes vs. Cradles Wednesday, Character Day on Thursday, and Color Wars on Friday. Speaking of school spirit, the football games in high school are way more energetic. There are actual themes and way more enthusiasm. Another aspect of high school that has changed is the mindset. Now that we're in high school, things matter way more. Getting good grades and trying our best is more of a priority for us. For some of us, it's like a clean slate, and new environment gives us new ways to improve and succeed. One of my peers said, "High school is way more organized, and I feel I have to do better because of my future." And even for me, I never needed to study, but now that my classes are a little harder, I usually study quite often. All in all, the start of high school has been a blast. It has been ages since we got to start off the school year normally, and I feel very fortunate to have a fun and safe school. We have amazing guidance counselors that we can always talk to and sincere and dedicated teachers that always have our back. As one of my peers put it, "I love it here, and I can't wait to be here for the next four years." Thank you, everybody, for your time, and have a wonderful evening. Any questions?
I'd just say, that was a great report. It was nice to hear like the energy and your enthusiasm, so thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
And welcome. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for your reports.
Thank you.
Excellent. That wraps up the Student Advisory Committee. And next, we move on to Mrs. Murphy, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. To begin my report, I am asking later on tonight for the school committee to approve my goals tonight. Thank you. And at this time, could Dr. Riley step up? Thank you.
Me too.
He's going to help me with some student recognitions.
Thank you.
Yeah. To begin with, we're going to start with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Awards.
Thank you, Superintendent Murphy. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight and our students. So the first student I'd like to recognize and ask to come up and join me at the podium is Alexander Banos. Superintendent Murphy is going to read Alexander's write-up from his counselors and administrator.
It is with great privilege that we recognize Alexander Banos as a Class of 2023 recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. Alexander is a true leader at Marlboro High School and a dedicated member of our community. During his years at MHS, Alexander has been a member of our National Honor Society and has received various awards, including the Harvard Book Award. Alexander is a talented musician and a gamer who manages to find time to lend a helping hand to those in need. Alexander is a volunteer at the Marlboro Community Food Pantry. Through this community service, he has played a vital role in the growth of the food pantry. Alexander also holds jobs at Remax in the summers and Altitude Trampoline Park during the school year. Alexander has successfully completed five Advanced Placement courses and is recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar with honor. He is currently enrolled in four additional AP courses during his senior year at Marlboro High School. Alexander is currently ranked number one in his class and has cumulative grade point average of 4.92. Alexander is an intelligent young man with a bright future ahead of him. Alexander intends to major in computer science with the dream of developing a video game someday. Congratulations to Alexander for his past, present, and future accomplishments. Congratulations. Dr. Riley, do you have the... yeah. He does, in fact. So, Alexander, this is for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Congratulations.
Well, we're going to do picture two at the end with everybody.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The next student is actually absent tonight. Eduardo Castro is also a recipient of the MASSS Award for Academic Excellence. His father is here tonight to receive his award, and Superintendent Murphy, if you want to take it from there.
Yes, and you should hear everything that everyone says about your son. It is with great privilege that we recognized Eduardo Castro as a Class of 2023 recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. Eduardo is known for being an incredibly dedicated and inquisitive student in the classroom who has a passion for problem solving. During his years at Marlboro High School, Eduardo has been a member of the National Honor Society and is current president of the Robotics Club. Eduardo has also received multiple faculty awards, including the Mathematics Faculty Award, the Frederick Douglass and Susan B. Anthony Book Award, and the Wrestler Medal for Math and Science. Along with all of his passions in school, Eduardo has also held multiple part-time jobs and has interned for the Department of Conservation. Eduardo is currently ranked number two in his class at Marlboro High School with a 4.87 cumulative grade point average. Eduardo has been recognized by the College Board through the National Hispanic Recognition Program and National Merit Scholarship Program based on his outstanding scores on the PSAT NSMQT. To date, Eduardo has successfully completed four Advanced Placement courses and is recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. Eduardo received a five on all the AP exams he took in the 2021-22 school year. As a senior, he is currently enrolled in four additional AP class courses. Eduardo is interested in pursuing a degree in mechanical engineering and continuing to pursue his passion of problem solving and designing. Congratulations to Eduardo on his past, present, and future achievements. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Do you want to say something?
Okay.
Sure.
Yes.
My name is Fernando de Castro. I am Brazilian. I just want to say something. Oh, take my glass, sorry. On behalf of my son, I am appreciative of this award, not only as a father, but also as an educator. The value of education has been very important to me and my family, and we continue to work on using our knowledge to help people. Thank you, everybody. Just one more thing. I'm sorry, the way I am shaking a little bit. I don't know if you guys know that Eduardo lost his mother seven years ago, and I wish she was here, you know? That's why I'm talking like this. I feel very happy to hear these words, and I couldn't help being like this, you know? I'm sorry. But I think it's a good thing, right? Thank you, everybody, okay?
Thank you. Now, we have a couple of words for the National School Development Council. Dr. Riley?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Murphy. So the first recipient that we're going to recognize tonight, I'll ask Julia Chalwood to please join me at the podium. And Julia is receiving the NESDEC Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning.
So the words for Julia, it is with great privilege that we recognize Julia Chalwood as a Class of 2023 recipient of the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth in Student Leadership and Learning. Julia is known in the MHS community for being a caring and conscientious student who always puts others first. During her years at Marlboro High School, Julia has been an active member of the National Honor Society. At MHS, Julia is a member of the Ski Club, Book Club, and Yoga Club. Outside of school, Julia has been involved in dance since she was in kindergarten. In addition to her many activities, Julia manages to find time to work at Target and the Fulfillment Center as a personal shopper. That is a job that she enjoys very much. Julia is currently ranked number three in her class with a 4.86 cumulative grade point average. To date, Julia has successfully completed four Advanced Placement courses and recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. As a senior, she is currently enrolled in four additional AP courses. Julia is very interested in pursuing a degree in environmental science or sustainable food systems with a minor in nutritional studies. She feels a career in these fields would be very rewarding as she'd be able to make a great impact by helping individuals in larger communities. Congratulations to Julia for her past, present, and future achievements. Congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to ask Samantha Nie to come up and join me at the podium. Samantha is also receiving one of the NESDEC Awards for Academic Growth in Student Leadership and Learning.
It is with great privilege that we recognize Samantha Nie as a Class of 2023 recipient of the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth in Student Leadership and Learning. That's a really long title. Samantha can be characterized as a hardworking and dedicated student. She is soft-spoken but known for going out of her way to help others in need. Samantha, like many of her peers during the pandemic, battled to overcome the stresses of isolation and remote learning. She's the best version of herself today and is poised for her best years ahead. During her years at Marlboro High School, Samantha has been an active member of the National Honor Society, National Business Honor Society, the Business Professionals of America. She also volunteers her times as a tutor, helping classmates and community members learn the Japanese language. Tutoring and assisting others in understanding Japanese is a great passion of Samantha's. Samantha is currently ranked number four in her class with a 4.85 cumulative grade point average. To date, Samantha has successfully completed four Advanced Placement courses and is recognized by the College Board as an AP Scholar. As a senior, she is currently enrolled in four additional AP courses. Samantha is very interested in pursuing a degree in computer science. She hopes to one day become a computer programmer and/or a web designer. Congratulations to Samantha on her past, present, and future achievements. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Can I just ask that our students come up one more time for a quick picture with Superintendent Murphy?
And Dr. Redd?
Please. Yes, thank you. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. It's photo time.
Yes, congratulations to all of you.
Is it okay at this time if we tell the families that it's okay for them to exit if they'd like to leave? Is that cool?
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have SATs tomorrow, so...
Oh, goodness. Go home. Go to sleep.
Yeah. Finally, Dr. Riley is going to be presenting on some of the modified graduation requirements of the Class of 2023.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Are you controlling the presentation?
I am, yes, sir. I'm trying to see if I can make it larger for everyone.
And you can go right by the title slide to the second slide. That's fine. Okay, so this should also be in your packets if you want to review it while...
It was not in the packet.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I can read it, and you can look at it up there, and I'll get you a copy.
Thank you.
I can't see though. Sorry. My eyes are not that good.
All right, so first, I just wanted to take some time tonight to review the history of the state Modified Competency Determination for a High School Diploma. This all began with the COVID-19 pandemic. So back in 2020, with the Class of 2020, DESI had asked us to close out grades essentially in March for that graduating class. They asked us to provide online remedial work, catch-up opportunities through June of 2020, to ensure that graduation status was not disrupted for that particular class. Going into the Class of 2021, as we know, MCAS was not offered for that graduating class. And so what DESI asked was that we substituted coursework in place of the fulfillment of the MCAS requirement. So math, English, and science classes took the place of what those students needed to complete in order to graduate and earn a diploma from the state. Similarly, for the Class of 2022, the same alternative competency determination, we call it CD. So if you hear me say CD, it's I'm not aging myself with the CD racks that we all used to have. But rather, the CD for that was the alternative competency determination was also the substitution of coursework in those three general areas in order to earn a diploma from the state of Massachusetts. And so here we are with the Class of 2023, Sporadic... Sporadic MCAS opportunities, lots of flexibility trying to be afforded to this class, particularly because MCAS is offered at specific times of the year. As we know, COVID was still up and down throughout the year. It did impact attendance for many students at times when the state exam was being offered. And so regardless, the state is still requiring MCAS for this graduating class in the areas of math and ELA. So they need to complete the MCAS exam in those two areas. This is mandatory in order to earn a diploma from any school district in the state. And so we have 43 of our current seniors that will be sitting for that exam again in the retest setting in November. They can also sit for it again in February, March if needed, right up through the end of the school year with the spring offerings as well, if it's needed. In addition to that, the science MCAS requirement for this particular class is still available to be fulfilled through coursework, similar to the previous two graduating classes. What that means is that students take a science class, usually a lab science, that's aligned with one of the state science MCAS exams, and that serves in place of needing to actually sit for the MCAS exam. Successful completion of that course is in place for the MCAS exam. In addition to the MCAS requirements by the state, we also have, as you know, through Policy 7.950, we have our own local requirements for graduation. And what Superintendent Murphy and I would like to propose to the committee is that we take a look at modifying some of those requirements in order to ensure that the local policy does not prevent students from graduating, especially with factors that were out of their control. For example, during the 2020-2021 school year, we had a limited number of credits that were offered to students in the hybrid model. I think the maximum number of classes that most students was taking was five, with electives occurring as a sixth option for underclassmen. And so that limited the number of credits that students were able to achieve that year. So what we would be looking at is doing an assessment of the graduating class and probably reducing that minimum of 96 credits to graduate from Marlborough High School for this particular year. It would not be by much. We've already kind of done an assessment of the class to see where they stand in terms of the local policy, and we were really impressed that they were able to pull together as many credits as they have over the last four years. But we do want to be considerate to the impacts of the pandemic. We do not want to hold students back from a diploma if they are very close to achieving that local policy of 96 credits. In addition to that, we would probably look at the MasCor recommendation from the state that's also part of our local policy and maybe prioritize some of those areas. For example, we might look at, Superintendent Murphy and I talked about this, especially with four-year college entrance and what that looks like right now, which is not its typical look, right? Students have had an impact in their transcripts coming out of high school. They've also had an impact in other areas, like their ability to take the SATs and what that used to be coupled with a transcript. So colleges are looking at this very differently right now because they know that this student group has been, this particular cohort has been impacted. And so what we would look at is probably prioritizing certain areas of that MasCor recommendation, but not all. So we might look at the four years of mathematics, the four years of ELA, the three years of science, the three years of history and social sciences. Have that be a part of the requirement, in addition to other electives that would be required to fulfill additional credits to get to whatever benchmark we set. That in and of itself is about 56 credits. So regardless of where we fall, there'll have to be a certain number of additional courses that would be required to graduate, which would fulfill your fine arts, your wellness requirements, and other elective areas especially. Some of the data I wanted to provide to you with this presentation, so we have 276 members of the Class of 2023. That changes every day. We have a lot of enrollment in and out of Marlborough High School that just occurs naturally throughout the school year. As I said before, we have 43 seniors that'll be sitting for the MCAS exams as part of their mandatory graduation requirement from the state. We're also monitoring the success of 60 seniors to meeting the fulfillment of part of that MasCor requirement that I just talked about with the four years of math and the four years of ELA. And so we've been meeting consistently with our guidance department to make sure that those students meet those requirements and fulfill those courses. And that would conclude my part of this. Now, I just want to open it up to questions. Would that be appropriate?
Dr. Riley, one of the things that we were talking about earlier, there was 43 students that are still needing MCAS. A lot of those students, most of them, or a good percentage of them, were new to Marlborough High.
Yes.
That have transferred in, yes. So it's not students that have been here for years and years. It's for students that, since they're new to Massachusetts or new to a public high school, need to take MCAS.
Absolutely. Yeah, just about 100% of that group. Yep.
Is this something we need to decide tonight?
There's actually allowance within our policy already to kind of go about the way that we need to. I think what we really just wanted to offer was, we want to hear your feedback. Want to know if what we're trying to do and accomplish makes sense to the committee. See if you want to have any alternative suggestions, that we take different approaches. So more of just an opportunity for conversation tonight.
Okay. I was just curious whether or not you wanted to take it into policy, but go ahead.
I think as Dr. Riley was alluding to, there is, there are some lines that are within the policy that allows for latitude by administration as needed. I guess I would just say, I mean, after, thank you for the data. It helps to kind of walk through what's going on and what has gone on. I mean, we know it, but understanding the 43 and the situation around that, I guess I would ask, similarly to where we've had like SAT prep courses and things like that that have been available to support our student body, are we in a position of offering an MCAS support for that ELA and math specific for this group to try and support them? Because if they're transition students that have not been here, I'm not sure how much of the foundation that they have to be able to get through it. Just curious.
I absolutely would say yes. And part of it too is we offer MCAS preparatory coursework as part of our program of studies.
Right.
Part of the issue, though, in terms of accessing that coursework, is when a student transfers into Marlborough High School, depending on what their needs of coursework might be, that can sometimes dictate how easily they can access those classes that occur directly within the school day, which I think is the best model if they want to be prepared for the exams. But what we could also do is maybe look at some acceleration academies. I know our Director of Alternative Education, Michael Allen, has brought this up, that he would like to help us facilitate some acceleration academies over the breaks in order to help students get prepared for the MCAS exams.
It just, it seems like with them needing to take at least the first round in November and then hopefully, I mean, I would hope that we could get some kind of a read on how they've done so that we can actually get on it right away to help them in preparation for needing to take it in February, March potentially again.
Yeah, the state is excellent about the turnover of those preliminary results from the fall.
Okay.
Because they know that there are a fair number of students whose graduation depends upon it.
Yeah. So that was, that's one of my things that at least was concerning me is how can we help them as best as possible on support there? And I guess, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation over the years around MasCor and all of those needs. I guess I would say that it would be helpful, I think, if you could come back to us after you all have done some assessment of, you know, that 56 credits with the ELA, the math responsibilities, the science and all of that, so that we can get a better idea of how the electives are going to play a role there. You know, we've had a lot of conversation about the wellness and the fine art credits and things like that, that it's important. But I think it would just be helpful if, once you guys have had time to reflect upon the data a little bit more so that we have a better understanding, because that's a huge jump from 96 to 56, right?
Well, where we are actually right now, just to clarify that, we are, with the requirement, I believe we're right around 70. I would have to add it up. And then what happens is with the 96, our electives fill in the rest. So it's not the full drop of 40 from 96 to 56. It's closer maybe to like 70 to 56, or 72 to 56. Just to, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, thank you. It just would be helpful to kind of have a circle back, I think, once you guys have kind of walked through where things are sitting. Because I think as we've had conversations in the past, our hope is that kids are continually engaged currently and they have a full plate.
Absolutely.
I recognize that pandemic put us all in a tough situation, but I want to make sure that they're still fulfilling a full schedule then in their senior year.
Oh, yeah.
When they have the opportunity to do so.
Absolutely. And I think many of them, as I said before, surprised us with the number of credits that they have pulled together in four years in spite of everything that's been going on. We also, when Superintendent Murphy and I talked about this, we wanted to be very thoughtful not to sort of declare like a minimum credit requirement, because we don't want students to interpret that as, hey, I've done a wonderful job. I've already met, fill in the blank, credits.
You were reading my mind.
The number is 96.
Right.
And we want to push all of our students to reach 96. We require all of our students across all grade levels, once again this year as last year, to carry a full course load. So they're carrying, if they're seniors, at least six classes on their schedule. There are a group of seniors, as you know, with our work-based learning initiatives, that have some flexibility in their schedules where they leave after four or five classes during the day, but they're also taking additional classes that just look a little bit different. And some of them are actually, as you know from the program of studies conversation, working right here at the ECC. We have others that are going over to the Good Now Brothers School. And lots of positive feedback, by the way, on that early childhood program.
They're not home playing video games. They're actively engaged.
They are not at home playing video games. No way.
Not that there's anything wrong with it.
Not that there's anything wrong with it.
There would be something wrong with that.
But that is the point, though. We have students that have worked very hard throughout their career at Marlborough High, and we don't want anyone to feel like they're in a position to be punished because of a pandemic shutdown, a shorter day because of the busing situation that we had, and didn't, missing a course or something. They've done everything that we've asked them to, and Dr. Riley is going to look at them individually.
Yeah, and I think that's the biggest thing, is that we've always kind of pushed that we wanted to make sure that the students were getting the full experience that they could during the senior year and not go, okay, I've already gotten those credits. I'm all good.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate where we were, you know, a couple of years ago, but now let's make sure that as much as we can keep them on a full course, it'd be great, too.
Absolutely. And not that this is directly tied to it, but it is positive news that following progress report data, our achievement is up very much.
That's great.
The students are doing a wonderful job this year.
That's great.
And the teachers.
Of course. Did you say this is 60 students that it's affecting?
Where, so what we did as a team of administrators and guidance counselors was we've gone through every student individually and looked at their current situation. And we identified 60 students that we're going to really be keeping very close tabs on. Our goal is to get them across the finish line.
Yep.
You know, one thing that the state has said, and I know that we've endorsed as a school district as well, is the implications of the pandemic have run deep within communities. We don't want to prohibit students from moving on with their lives with a high school diploma, unless it's absolutely necessary, because they are so far like below that threshold that it doesn't make sense. And then we continue to support those students. But just to clarify, that's our goal, is to help monitor those 60 students especially that they complete their coursework this year.
Is it possible that you could come back to us, like prior to winter break, to just give us an idea of where things are?
Yeah.
Like, you know, how things seem to have fallen with the MCAS, obviously, in November. I don't know that you'll have much information back soon.
Probably not till January.
Right, till January, maybe so on January around the MCAS, just so we have at least a benchmark of understanding what's going on there. But then with the other 60 students that you're kind of needing to keep a closer eye on.
Absolutely.
So that, you know, we can kind of help and partner with you for support, you know, early in '23 if necessary.
Absolutely. I could do like a mid-year check-in if you'd like.
Yeah.
Because then at that point, we have some really great data with grades and things like that, too.
That would be helpful.
Sound good?
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Matthews, you have anything? Okay. Didn't want you to think we forgot about you. Great.
Thank you, everybody.
I think we're good.
It's nice to see you all.
Nice to see you always, Mr. Riley. Dr. Riley, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Scaz, Dr. Scaz, I'm so sorry.
Madam Chair, before Atul, before you leave, I just want to say how proud as former Richard School Principal I was of Sarah Arisha and Atul for their presentation tonight. You did a wonderful job. Congratulations.
Agreed.
Actually, I just wanted to also say, as soon as he came, we were so excited to see you. And also, he said, you're the English teacher, so you're one of his favorites.
I will take all credit.
He was happy to see you. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Tonight, I want to present some information around a couple of topics. The first is homeschooling. As of October 2022, this month, there is a decrease from last school year in the amount of Marlborough students who are being homeschooled. At the end of the 2021-2022 school year, there were 72 students who were homeschooled, and to date this school year, there are 60. I will continue to update the school committee on our homeschooling numbers periodically. Next topic is restorative, unless you have any questions about that one?
Well, I'm just curious, prior to the pandemic, I mean, we know a lot of people homeschooled their kids when the pandemic hit. But do we know like how many homeschooled kids we had ordinarily prior to the pandemic?
We have databases every year. It seems to be almost back to, yeah.
I was going to say, I thought it was like 50, 60.
Yeah. It really peaked for a while, but it's been declining. A lot of families started to notify us at the end of last year. They were transitioning back this year.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. And I will continue to keep, that number does seem to be fluid. We get new cases of homeschooling requests from time to time, so I'll let you know if it does increase or decrease. Restorative justice is the next topic, and as you know, we have been implementing restorative justice principles in the Marlborough Public Schools for the last year and a half. And most recently, Whitcomb School and Marlborough High School has trained an additional cohort of roughly 20 to 25 faculty members in Tier One training. And to date, we have approximately 300 staff members. That includes paraeducators, administrators, and MEA members who have been trained in Tier One practices in Marlborough Public Schools. So we're pushing forward with this. We're here, we're collecting good feedback along the way. We're just trying to make sure that the practices are practical and being used in the classrooms at the same time that we're getting people trained in the Tier One and the Tier Two practices. Any questions around restorative justice? Curriculum resource update. I did intend on updating the school committee tonight on the discontinuation of the Journeys Program and next steps for the program that will replace the Journeys Program, but Mr. Sanborn unfortunately experienced a death in his family. He was going to join to help me with the details of this, and he is not able to join us tonight. So he will join us at the next school committee meeting to talk about the details of that. And then finally, on behalf of Principal Riley and the Marlborough Public Schools, I would like to congratulate the following students on their AP Scholar awards. And some of these names are from of these names are familiar. In your packet tonight, you have the names of the class of two thousand and twenty-two and your current seniors, class of two thousand and twenty-three. I'm going to read the names of our current seniors. Alexander Banos for AP Scholar with Honor. Joseph Carman, AP Scholar with Honor. Eduardo Castro, AP Scholar. Julia Sherwood, AP Scholar. Peter De Cruz, AP Scholar with Honor. Emma Devens, AP Scholar. Seelis Jamal, AP Scholar. Samuel Harris, AP Scholar. Joshua Horn, AP Scholar. Connor Hurley, AP Scholar. Kelly Nguyen, AP Scholar with Honor. Samantha Nye, AP Scholar. And finally, Rachel Schooler, AP Scholar. Congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty-three AP Scholar recipients. And that concludes my update to school committee this evening. Any questions on any of those topics?
Can I be painful and ask if we can read the twenty-twos, because I don't know whether they've really got all their names read before?
Certainly.
Some parents would love it.
I will, and I will tell you that I had phonetic help with the pronunciation of the class of two thousand twenty-three, so bear with me on the class of two thousand twenty-two. Koby Almeida, AP Scholar with Distinction, class of two thousand twenty-two. Catherine Barnum, AP Scholar with Distinction. Tiago Borges, AP Scholar with Distinction. Sarah Cronin, AP Scholar with Distinction. Rachel Di Donato, AP Scholar. Andrew Fisher, AP Scholar with Honor. Aiden Grockie, AP Scholar. Esteban Serna, AP Scholar. Cade Harris, AP Scholar.
Adam.
Adam Hussain, AP Scholar. John Comitaris, AP Scholar. Paige Nessler, Niesler, thank you, Jessica, AP Scholar. Mary Lottis, AP Scholar with Distinction. Kathleen Larkin, AP Scholar with Honor. Lindsay.
LaFave.
LaFave, thank you, AP Scholar. Sarah McKinnon, AP Scholar. Jacob Naim, AP Scholar with Distinction. Hattie Parker, AP Scholar. Vishwa Patel, AP Scholar. Vishwa?
Vishwa.
Vishwa, right, thank you. Sorry, you guys have, you got me on my toes here. Nicholas Rizende, AP Scholar. Heath Sanio, 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 AP Scholar with Distinction. Courtney Sweeney, AP Scholar with Distinction. Andres Thomas Cruz, AP Scholar with Honor, and Jonah Zimmerman, AP Scholar.
And thank you for marrying me. I just, you know, it's impressive. I mean, the kids here tonight, you know, I'm crying when I was listening to him be here for his son, you know, and it just, this is impressive. They've had a lot of tough stuff thrown at them, you know, adults, we had to deal with it, but I just feel like these kids are still just trying to figure it out, and like, look at all these kids, like knocking it out of the park, so just wanted to.
Yeah, certainly a wonderful evening to recognize everyone's accomplishments and forgive me for not being prepared with the.
You were prepared.
Oh, right.
I threw a curveball, sorry.
Congratulations to all our AP Scholars, thank you, Principal Riley for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, acceptance of the minutes of September twenty-seventh.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
I just forgot your name.
Mrs. Ryan. Yes.
Wow. Wow. Did you say yes?
Yes.
And, yes, it is, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Public participation. Good evening, you know the drill, check for the green light, please.
It's on.
And state name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name's Kevin McEulie, and I reside on Ridge Road in Marlboro. Before I get to what I was going to discuss, if I could just quickly, Dr. Skaz, the restorative justice, great to hear about. One thing that maybe the committee could consider moving forward, when there's a presentation like that, not everybody in the general public understands what tier-one and tier-two practices are on restorative justice. It might be helpful to give a little more in-depth so that parents understand what that entails within a classroom, within a school. Just something, I'm a little bit familiar with restorative justice, but, you know, from a parent's perspective, that detail, I think, would go a long way towards helping educate parents about what is happening within the district. So just something to consider, but it was great to hear about that, so. Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee, after that note. Sadly, I'm here again to address bullying. I hate that I'm back here again after coming since March to talk about this. Two meetings ago, I thanked you for taking some small steps, but told you it wasn't enough. And looking over the district's bullying prevention and intervention plan, and I know you all, or most of you have laptops in front of you so much, or if you have that plan, looking at the bullying prevention intervention plan, as well as the preschool through grade-eight handbook over the last two weeks, there's some flaws, to be totally truthful. In reviewing these documents, I found that the district misidentified the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Problem Resolution System, or PRS, more than fifty percent of the time. More than fifty percent of the places where the words problem resolution system should have been written, district personnel wrote something else. In the bullying prevention and intervention plan, the authors make four references to it and get it wrong twice. In one paragraph on page twelve, it's ITed as the problem resolution system, but in the very next sentence, it's called the program quality assurance services. In the preschool through eight handbook, it cites the program quality assurances services on page seventeen. The online version of the preschool through eight handbook also contains a link to a prior version of the bullying prevention and intervention plan, not the most updated version. This would seem to show a lack of quality control within the process. I would also call your attention to page eight of the bullying prevention and intervention plan. It says, and I'll quote from the plan, "The school or district will make a variety of reporting resources available to the school community, including, but not limited to, an incident reporting form, a voicemail box, a dedicated mailing address, and an email address. The incident reporting form is readily available on the district's website, right below the bullying prevention and intervention plan. However, in reviewing the website, the app, student handbooks, bullying policy, and bullying prevention intervention plan, I myself was unable to find any information about a voicemail box, dedicated mailing address, or email address to report bullying. On Monday, I called the main telephone numbers for the district office, high school, middle school, and Jarick Elementary School, looking for the voicemail box became up empty. It shows to do it on Monday when schools were closed, to see if it would be easily accessible. I couldn't find a single prompt to access it. So here's my question, can anyone on the dais tell me what that number is, or where I can find those addresses? I know this isn't the place for the back and forth, so I'll be more than happy to wait and hope someone will respond during the members forum. It's clear that the district is continuing to fail on this issue, and it's abundantly clear that members of this committee are either unwilling or incapable of holding their friends in the administration accountable. I beg you, please, please do the right thing. Order the administration to start over on the bullying prevention and intervention plan, bring teachers, parents, students, law enforcement, mental health professionals, and other stakeholders in, and follow the so-called mapping process, which is cited in the plan. There's an actual mapping process cited in the plan. Was it followed in implementing this version of the plan? Judging by the looks I'm getting, I would say it probably wasn't. Doing this is the only way the district might finally get this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, action items. Mrs. Murphy, FY twenty-three superintendent goals.
So tonight I'm asking the committee to approve my FY twenty-three superintendent goals.
Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three goals.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. We will do a roll call vote. Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Your goals are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And MASC delegate, so for the public, MASC is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. It is the professional organization for the Commonwealth that supports school committees in professional development and support around governance issues, or whatever we need help with, basically. And every year they have a conference, and at that conference, there is a delegate assembly to vote on the legislative goals for the year. Every year, prior to the conference, we elect a delegate to that assembly and a, an alternate, and we also go through the resolutions that are up, and we vote as a committee on how we instruct our delegate to vote on them at the delegate assembly. So that's the business at hand. So first is to choose a delegate. I, I would challenge my colleagues that perhaps someone who's not done it yet before, but who will be at the conference on the Wednesday, the first day of the conference, which all of you will be, except for Mr. Gary can't attend this year, perhaps someone else would like to do it? Mrs. Hennessy.
I would be more than happy to actually step up and offer myself this year.
Excellent, very pleased, and we need an alternate.
It's not that bad, people.
And, yeah, full disclosure, I will be there, I will be in the non-voting section.
What time is it at?
It's at three.
I was going to say two or three, something like that. I'm thinking about pass.
I'm pretty sure it's at three.
Yeah. It's mid to late afternoon.
Yeah. If nobody else wants to, I'll be the, I'll be the alternate. You'll be there. Or you want to be the alternate? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Excellent. So we will, should we vote them as a slate? Okay. Entertained a motion.
Oh. Motion to make Katherine Hennessy the delegate and Mr. Caruso as the alternate.
Excellent. Motion made and seconded to name Katherine Hennessy as the delegate, Dan Caruso as the alternate. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Excellent. Onto the resolutions. So, would you like to read them, Madam Delegate?
Oh, gosh, okay.
I made Mrs. Matthews do it the last couple of times when she was the delegate.
All right, so I can just do the first we are as is?
Yeah. So one, one thing that I just want to preface this by saying is that some of the things that come up before the delegate assembly don't actually affect us here in Marlboro. Sometimes there are things that have to do with, you know, districts that are different from ours, and the way that these resolutions get chosen are either from the executive board of the organization, but for actually, for the first time ever, none of these are from the executive board of the organization. They are all resolutions that were developed by school committees, and in the case of the first one, it didn't, and so if, if a school committee puts out, they send to the executive board, or a resolutions committee, their idea, and the resolutions committee talks about it and they decide whether or not it's worthy. Well, the one way that you can get around that, and it's an automatic to the delegate assembly, is if.
You have multiple.
Multiple districts that cover all regions of the state all sign on together, and that was the case in the first one. So it didn't even go to the delegate, the resolutions committee, it just goes straight to the delegate assembly. So with that being said, there are six resolutions this year.
Okay, so the first one, wow, okay. Regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students, and as mentioned, which I think this is interesting to at least note, sponsored by the Lexington School Committee and co-sponsored by the Worcester, Somerville, Grafton, and Franklin School Committees. So, multiple people involved. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a long history of standing for civil rights, including advocacy for Bill of Rights in the US Constitution, and whereas Massachusetts codified gender identity as a protected class in the two thousand and eleven Act Relative to Gender Identity, and whereas all children deserve a safe environment in which to grow up, and whereas some state governments are now criminalizing supportive medical care for trans individuals, moving to bar families from traveling to access such care and otherwise violating the civil rights of trans children, trans children and their families, and whereas the defense of the civil rights of the historically marginalized is contained within the first article of the Massachusetts Constitution right of seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the great and general court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws to ensure such children and their families have the power of enjoying in, in safety and tranquility, their natural rights, and the blessings of life as guaranteed by the Constitution of the Commonwealth. So, that would be the first one.
Excellent reading, Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you. So.
Entertained a motion.
I'd make a motion in support of this resolution.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Madam Vice Chair, before you start the second.
Yes, sorry.
Topic, may I just cause a slight disturbance because my computer is going to be dying soon? I just need to plug it in so that we don't lose Mrs. Matthews.
Oh.
While you're reading the next.
Please do your thing. Can't lose Mrs. Matthews.
Sorry.
All right, so.
Okay, number two.
Resolution two, to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund, sponsored by the Plimpton School Committee. Whereas the Municipal Modernization Act allows for municipalities in conjunction with their school districts to create a special education reserve fund to cover the cost of unanticipated or unbudgeted special education costs, including the cost of district placements.
We lost her.
I think we have to pause, don't we?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
Hold, please.
Yeah. So we need to take a brief recess while we get Mrs. Matthews back.
You're the loser.
Nah.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's easier to get out of the front.
Normally it's down there.
Those aren't the regular plugs.
No, it's normally underneath where the mayor normally sits is where the plug is.
These plugs are covered, though.
Holyoke in two thousand fifteen and Southbridge in two thousand sixteen. And whereas the placement of the public schools of Lawrence, Holyoke and Southbridge in receivership has removed their respective school committees from their role as um the governing board for their schools and has replaced local governance with a state receiver. And whereas a Boston Globe analysis of test scores, graduation rates, college enrollment, and a dozen other metrics in Lawrence, Holyoke and Southbridge shows state receivers have failed to meet almost all of its stated goals for the districts. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has no plan, strategy, or timeline for restoring local governance and accountability to the voters of Lawrence, Holyoke and Southbridge. And whereas the Massachusetts Association of School Committees asserts that a strong system of local governance and accountability is the foundation of excellent schools. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability for the Lawrence, Holyoke and Southbridge Public Schools no later than July first, two thousand twenty-three. I would also say and be it further resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committee calls on the Massachusetts legislate legislature to enact legislation to limit any future state takeovers to a term of no more than three years. Um, I will make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
I I just some of the wording in here. I appreciate some of the situation that's happened, but I feel like there's so much more to it. And it's not so cut and dry. I I would love to have the local um governing body back involved. But um I guess on this one, it just seemed like all or nothing and.
Would you like to suggest an amendment on the handy dandy amendment form that is in our packet?
I was just putting out my discussion. Thank you before going for amendments. Thanks. Anyone else feel like?
I I think that that is, I mean, it seems like there's a it's a long time, especially for Lawrence. Been eleven years, but um there's a reason that the districts went into receivership in the first place. And nothing's happened to fix it, which is bad.
By the receiver.
By the receiver. So the first group failed. So they put in a second group. They failed. So we'll think this first group's gonna try again. I don't I don't agree with the premise on on the, I don't have the answer.
So I mean, I think I think the bottom, like the the what's underpinning all of this is the fact that in Massachusetts, individual communities, like it's the the bedrock of our democracy in Massachusetts, but in our country, is local control. That's what our system of government is based on, that local decisions are made by locally elected people. And they have taken the when the Board of Education steps in. I mean, I'd love to hear, you know, maybe your your thoughts on it, Mrs. Murphy. But, you know, when this when the Board of Education steps in and says, we don't like the way you're doing your job. We're gonna take your elected capacity to determine what happens in your community away from you. What this is suggesting is okay, but at least have an end date or an end game.
Right. And I think that these the urban setting cities, right? These are urban school districts. Um, it goes back to the discussion that I said that I'd love to engage here. How do we measure success? How are they measuring success? I'm getting a little nervous because the Boston Globe is measuring same way the state was, right? Test scores, graduation rates, college enrollments, and a dozen other metrics. But is that the metrics that those families and those students and that commute those communities? How they're measuring success? And I think that until people are engaging in that conversation, like Mr. Gary said, it's it's just going to continue where you're you're labeling that is a failure and you're labeling that is a failure. But what would success look like? And how do they work for that? And unless the local community is involved in that, then it's never going to improve. Right? So.
Improve based on the metrics that the state is imposing.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if the community does come together and sets metrics.
Absolutely.
And can show that they are making progress based on those metrics.
But I don't.
But they don't even have the opportunity to do that.
They don't.
They have elected school committees in these communities that have no ability to do anything. Like I'm like, I have a front, I I know a couple of people on the Holyoke School Committee. I'm like, what do you do at meetings? Like, they have no power to do anything. It's really, I I just feel like it's on, I I want to say un-American, it's un-Massachusetts to, you know, completely, there there needs to be a better system. I I I'm not against the powers that be stepping in to help. I mean, the purpose of it was really to help the community and to do things and provide resources to make the situation better. I think in Chelsea, that actually did work, did it not? Do you know, anyone have any opinion on that? I don't know.
I.
I mean, that was a long time ago. They were in receivership and then they were out of receivership. And I think they're doing pretty well. But um, I don't know.
So, what are people?
I've I've always had a problem when you take, first of all, you take people that have no connection with the school system and put them in charge of it. They have no historical knowledge of anything to begin with. And it's this idea that, and it's usually people that come in that probably themselves literally haven't been in a classroom of any sort in probably the last twenty years of their career to come in and now start dictating inside a classroom that they have no knowledge about and just to generally speaking, have no knowledge about how to actually work inside a classroom these days. It's just as a teacher, it's always just, you know, another example of them saying, we know better than you. But when they don't know better than them and they still insist they're gonna stay there till they learn better to to know better than you, which is what they seem to be doing in these communities. You know, if it isn't working, and you know, they didn't take along to tell those school committees, you're not you're not working, you're not doing your job, they don't seem to want to admit that themselves. And that that and that bothers me. If you can't admit to yourself that what you're doing is not working, then what right do you have to tell some other people what you were doing is not, that wasn't the right way either? Obviously, they don't know better. They don't know better. And at some point in time, they've decide whether it's time for them to admit that and then start working, as you suggested, with the community again, as opposed to just dictating through the community. And so I've always I've I've always had a an issue anytime when they when people who don't. It's a lot of people, they have people at the Board of Education, it's like the commissioner. You know, when's the last time he was in a classroom on a regular basis teaching? You know, doesn't mean he's not qualified in a lot of respects, but if you and not having been in a classroom a long time always makes me nervous when I bring in these people from somewhere else that have been doing a lot of theoretical practice for the last five, ten years of their life and not necessarily a lot of practical practice. It's always bothered me. And at a certain point, you have to, what's the old term, Fisher Catbake?
Anybody else? Mrs. Matthews, anything to add?
I, the one thing I I agree with whatever everything that has been said. The biggest problem is there's no exit plan and there's no collaboration. And I think this resolution has been out there for the last ten years, you know, and it's just regurgitated. And I I get it, but obviously, nobody's listening. So I would support it only in the fact that some that better plan needs to be made. But we're obviously preaching to somebody who doesn't want to hear that. Because every year, we vote on it and, you know, beg and plead. And obviously, none of our state legislators want to put it on their back and challenge the Board of Ed. Because as you you said, Vice Chair, that these are elected officials are literally sitting there with their hands tied, cannot do anything. So what's the point? So that's my two cents on it.
Thank you. I just will remind everyone that at the delegate assembly, which you haven't been to yet, but people, representatives from districts make um amendments. And um, one of the things we should think about when we're done with these, we can decide how we want to handle, like what the marching order should be for you. But um, in past years, based on amendments that happened during the delegate assembly, sometimes the flavor of the resolution actually changes. And so um, we can instruct the delegate to um, you know, vote the way we vote tonight or leave it up to them to vote their conscience based on what comes out in the final resolution. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we can go ahead and vote on uh, resolution four. Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
No.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is approved. Number five.
So Resolution Five, Personal Financial Literacy Education Sponsored by the Framingham School Committee. Uh, whereas students will need to make wise financial decisions to promote financial well-being throughout their lives. And whereas students will need to develop actionable strategies to manage their futures, including managing their budgets by developing savings plans, navigating credit and debt, and creating a blueprint for financing higher education or their careers. And whereas students will need to be informed consumers when making everyday purchases for both small and large items. Whereas with guidance and financial literacy, students have increased chances of affording and attaining a college education. And whereas without prior long-term financial planning, higher education plans do not come to fruition for many students due to extraordinary tuition rates. And whereas college tuitions and other financial choices such as credit card debts and loans can saddle students with a lifetime of debt due to their inability to pay back student and other type of loans. Therefore be it resolved that MASC file legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to find personal financial literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with a lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible to avoid being deterred by financial woes. This legislation um should ensure that the students at various levels would benefit from curriculum in Massachusetts Public Schools, which would include content in personal financial literacy. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. I went to a a little um, uh, you know, they had a Zoom to talk about these and to, you know, give a little bit more information. The one question that I had was if this were to come to fruition, like, there's already not enough periods in a day to do everything. How how realistic is this? I mean, it's it's somewhat on par with the civic um, education. Um, but um, the people that talked about it were saying that there are definite ways and models to embed it in the curriculum in other areas. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be a bona fide class that you'd have to sort of fit into a schedule.
So my understanding is Marlboro does have a course that does teach financial literacy. I do not support this resolution. I think this should be up to each individual district that I don't think we need legislation to mandate something else for our teachers to also now do. I think, like you said, there there's only so many periods in a day and people need to prioritize. And we 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 in Marlboro offer this class. And we also have our awesome Reality Fair. And I think that these there are ways that communities can do this without it having to be forced on them.
Our student rep has something to say on this.
I think I would agree with Denise. Um, I definitely know we offer a lot of business classes and financial literacy classes. I personally have never taken one and I definitely appreciate not having that um, like forced to take, because I think while it can be a very valuable life lesson, I think it's really frustrating when you have those classes you have to take, when you have a strong idea of what you might want to take and only so much time and so much space. So definitely maybe in in putting it into maybe other aspects of classes. But like, having students required to take this class, I think, would be very, very frustrating, just in my opinion.
Yeah, and I I honestly don't think that's the intent, is that that it's a specific class. I think it's somehow embedding it in the standards.
So, you know, very much what you said. I love the idea. I think it's a great skill to have. But I just think that we've got a lot already that is being asked to be taught specifically. And I I think just trying to add something else onto the plate um, is not something that we need to have from the legislature around this. Great thing, but let it be on a personal basis. And I think we are very fortunate here in Marlboro that that is a um, it's something that is prioritized with having the Reality Fair, having the Financial Literacy Course. We have opportunities to be able to pursue insight and education um, through our school district here. So I'm I'm really not inclined to to uh, support this on a broader basis for the resolution.
I think that this is a fantastic idea to include that education in in um, you know, a student's um, high school career. But I do also feel that it doesn't need to be a legislated thing. Um, and I don't, I want it, I I'm I'm not supportive of it. But I don't want it to be thought of as because we in Marlboro do it a different way, we're not gonna support it because of that. Um, I think we in we we're, we can see further than the initial question and um, there's flaws in the in the premise on that, so that's my feeling.
Well, it's it's obvious that the person who wrote this did not understand the term economy of words, because there's enough words in here to take you forever to figure what they're trying to say anyway. But it again, it's a question of when we, when somebody else, it's interesting that we, someone from our perspective, we propose this, because in about a month, a week, someone's gonna propose something from outside of us that we're that we're gonna be looking at this, and they'll be looking at this and going, how dare they suggest that we will all? It's just funny that we don't occasionally realize that we're sometimes sticking our own foot in our own mouth sometimes and opening ourselves up to anybody else who wants this. You know, there was a lot of things we need to do, we could do. We can't do them all. We have, we don't need what we can do, and what we do here in Marlboro is pretty good. And I'm not saying that it's better than anybody else, but, you know, we 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 don't need anybody else telling us telling us that we have to do anything else that we are already doing. Especially since those things always come with suggested way of doing things that aren't necessarily the way we do them. And I just think it's just better just to leave it, you know, up to where we are now. And like I said, when something else comes along in a month or two that's telling us we have to teach something else, I have that funny feeling some of the same people proposing this will be all up in arms that somebody is telling them we have to do something else. So I just think it's time, we have to sometimes realize that we are not going to be helping ourselves by helping other people see ways into the curriculum with other items either. It's a great idea, but.
Interested on your thoughts, our actual educators. Our actual curriculum experts.
So, well, we we do, like, it was noted, we do have the Financial Literacy Course.
It's an elective though, right?
Yeah.
It's an elective.
Yes.
What percentage of kids actually take it?
Actually, people can't get into it.
Yeah, yeah, we could probably.
A lot of people take it.
Yeah, yeah. And the Reality Fair, which touches um, all the students. My concern is when you say something is going into another course or embedded into something, um, then you are, you you're gonna be removing something from the first course because there's limited amount of time. And then is that really the intent? It can't just be it goes into this area because that's where we want to fit it in. It might not be really a natural place.
Supplant.
Yeah, it's it's a usually a good idea, but it doesn't always work that way. Um, and I think it would be frustrating if, for Brandon, if someone said, now we're gonna add some financial literacy to ELA, um, and um, try to work it out in your team how that would work, right? So, yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I just remember taking the course when I was in high school and benefiting from it. But, you know, I have to respect Jessica's words. I I think that it, a lot of this does um, fall in the um, course catalog and ownership of the student him or herself. And I think that if it's something that a student um, recognizes as valuable to his or her future, I think that it should be offered as an elective. Now, it is kind of concerning to hear Mrs. Hennessy say that it is an elective that not all students can get into. So maybe that's something that we look into a little bit more. But as far as what I've heard and what I've experienced with what Marlboro Public School has offered, I think that we could move forward with this without necessarily supporting something to be put into legislation.
Sorry, one more thing.
No, that's fine.
I think also to keep in mind, like, one reason why I felt comfortable in not taking this course is because I have the resource of my parents, who are very financially competent and I know can help me. And I know a lot of people are not fortunate enough to have that person in their life sometimes. So like, again, it's great that MHS offers the opportunity. But I also think it's not like people don't get any help with that financial literacy either.
Good point. Thank you. Any other thoughts? Mrs. Ryan.
No.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Nope.
Mr. Gary.
No.
Mrs. Matthews.
No.
Mr. Caruso.
No.
And I'm gonna vote yes, only thinking of the rest of the state and not necessarily us. But the resolution does not carry.
Thank you. Uh, Resolution Six, Establishment of a Regional School Assessment Reserve Fund sponsored by the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Whereas regional school committees of the Commonwealth are tasked with producing financially sound budgets designed to meet the needs of all of their students, just like all public school committees of Massachusetts. And whereas municipalities of regional schools are presented with regional assessments, which can fluctuate dramatically based on enrollment. Bless you.
Bless you.
Enrollment percentage changes and can be further exacerbated by unbalanced adjustments of the equalized valuation EQV of property. A key metric in the state's formula used to calculate the minimum required local contribution. And whereas in two thousand sixteen, the state of Massachusetts passed the municipal municipal modernization act, which aims to grant more local control and encourage financial efficiencies where possible. The precedent exists in statute to support the creation of a regional schools assessment reserve fund, which could be used to offset abnormally large increases to the municipality's regional assessment. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. I will put forth a motion to approve the mouthful.
Motion said made and seconded to approve. One, um, there is a typo in here in the paragraph that starts any municipality. It says um, that if there's an increase of thirty-five percent, it's actually three point five. Thirty-five percent would be really frightening. So, you know, at first blush, this seems like it doesn't affect us because it's more geared uh, towards regional schools. And what happens where this comes into play a lot has to do with regional schools where you've got maybe two communities, one is wealthier than the other, and the and they need a new roof, right? And so they have a percentage of what each one has to pay, but the poorer municipality doesn't have the money. So they're just asking to, is this, am I saying this correctly, Doug? They they're asking to start this fund so that they can squirrel away money in case this happens.
Yes, we would allow the individual municipalities to have another stabilization fund for their assessments.
Assessments for the region. And again, we're not a regional school district, but we do, as a community, participate in the ACABIT School District. And we have the largest number of students at that and therefore the highest amount of money that goes to that school than any other community. So we get hit hard when they decide to do big changes. So.
Yet on that note, our representation is not as large, even though we have a lot of students that may from Marlboro community.
It's not proportional representation.
So I only say that because I think we need to keep that in mind because we, Marlboro, only still has one voice.
That's how all the towns do.
I totally understand, but I just say, I I think that that's something we do need to keep in mind because I think sometimes, you know, we we have a larger percentage of students there. There's a certain amount of expectation of funds coming from Marlboro to support certain things. Yet we don't always have the ability of, you know, having more votes or something like that around the table relative to whatever's happening. So I.
It's another subject. You're absolutely right. We need to deal with that on a different day. But yes.
Um, I have a question, and maybe.
Maybe Doug can answer, because I don't know.
But I'm not sure. Is there is, is there a reason why a regional school district couldn't create their own fund for this already? Something limiting them?
So I I've never developed a regional budget. I will tell you the information that I know. So regional districts are able to carry over leftover fiscal year funds up to a percentage of their total fiscal year budget. I believe it's five percent. So they have built into their system already, when possible, a little stabilization fund from which they can draw and minimize the demands upon their member municipalities. So that exists already. I think, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, why do they need legislation? Can't they just be fiscally responsible and and have a fund for big expenses? Like, maybe I'm asking the wrong question.
Well, I do know there are specific rules that are set by the legislature as to what you can do a revolving account for, correct?
Right, and they have that, uh, again, that revolving account that they can use to level out their specific budget for a specific fiscal year if their expenses. So if the growth for that year is more than, you know, what the municipalities can afford. What this is saying is giving the the municipalities themselves the ability to create, if they so choose, another stabilization fund so that if there is an event in which their enrollment in that regional school increases so much that they're seeing, say, a three point five percent increase in their total assessment from the previous year, uh, then they would be able to draw from the stabilization fund and minimize the impact on their own municipal budgets. Uh, because as we know, Prop two and a half limits how much we can raise our taxes on our residents.
So so my original question was, it was, couldn't the the regional district do that? But this is, so you're saying it's up to the municipalities. Couldn't the municipalities do that now anyway?
I don't know.
Because we think we're gonna have to have.
Do you know? Uh, so for regional school districts, first, um, for a regional school district at the end of the year, if they do not spend all of their funds, they're able to keep them and put them into a revolving account versus a district like Marlboro where any unspent money has goes back to the city. Also, uh, for the member towns, um, the towns also have their own stabilization accounts, um, especially in the fall, like when they get free cash back, um, they vote on what to spend that on. My question on the resolution would be, is this for unexpected, unplanned expenses? Or um, or is it something where if if a town can't make? or is it something where if a town can't make, make the budget funds? Because right now for regional school districts, if a school district, there's a formula where the school district contributes a certain percentage of the overall budget and the state kicks in the rest to meet foundation. And for some of the districts, that percentage was based on what they could afford and the state was over each year was trying to increase that amount so to build the capacity of that town to be able to meet their foundation amount. But there's a lot of towns that, that still aren't even at foundation amount and the state already kicks in the rest of it to meet that foundation amount. So why, why would they need to have an additional stabilization fund if each town has a stabilization fund and each, and the district itself has one as well? I don't know the answer to the question, but in this resolution that Catherine read, it says the creation of a regional schools assessment reserve fund, which could be used to offset abnormally large increases to a municipality's regional assessment. So my guess is that would mean not just to balance the budget, it's if something big happened that they weren't planning for. That's my reading of it, but I don't really know.
But it's also talking about, this is addressing the municipalities' ability to create a fund, not the district. Am I reading that correctly? Because it says municipalities.
Yes, but if you, if you think of it in the sense of ACABET.
Yeah.
It's our municipality, so ACABET is not part of our school district. It's the city of Marlboro as the municipality that connects to ACABET.
If Marlboro decided that they, because they are trying to be fiscally responsible, think that there's going to be something coming down, you know, whatever the road, the council could set up a fund and try to fill it until that.
Up to 3.5%, right? I think that was what it said.
Up to 10%.
No more than 3.5% above the previous year's assessment.
I thought it was 10%.
No, it's saying when the assessment increases more than 3.5, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, in my opinion, another rainy day fund for the municipality so that they can keep, keep the taxes stable for their residents if they can fund such a.
My question still is, couldn't they just, couldn't they do that anyway? Why do we need to resolve?
I would guess they can't because why would they?
That's what I'm trying to ask.
No.
We don't know, so I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I do know the person who wrote this. I could ask him. But I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
So how do you want to handle it? My guess is there's going to be a lot of questions at the delegate assembly because if we're struggling to understand this, we're not the only district that's going to be struggling to understand this. I guess I would recommend that we vote, whichever way it goes, we let Catherine make an educated decision based on any further understanding that you come up with at the delegate assembly.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
I mean, they're going to have, yeah, sure.
Mrs. Matthews, anything to add?
No.
Does that seem reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll be there with you for moral support. Okay, great. Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
No.
Mr. Gary.
No.
I'm going with yes.
So four to two.
So it passes, but you have free rein to vote no if it doesn't make any sense once you learn more about it. Do people feel comfortable giving Catherine the ability to change our votes based on new information that might come about? Shall we?
For this resolution, yes.
For all of them. Yeah, for this one for sure. Because I don't think any of us really understands this well enough, but in general.
Okay, that means you're it.
Should we take a vote on that or do we just want to send you off with?
Well, no, but all joking aside, I think we voted a particular way based on the way it was written and I think that they can't drastically change it for it to be a totally different vote.
Actually, they do change, sometimes they change a lot, right, Mrs. Matthews?
Yeah.
They sometimes change things a lot.
Amendments can be made that will completely change the tone. So it may go, it may clarify it enough that everybody might say, oh, that makes sense and why? Because this isn't very clear, because we still have a lot of questions. So once it's clarified, all of a sudden, you know, the light bulb might go off and go, oh, now we understand why you're asking for this and why it makes sense. So in any of these resolutions, so.
I would say.
I mean, you guys always gave me the ability that if things changed, to vote with where discussion had been. And if there were things that were clarified that we probably came up with. I mean, I've submitted amendments as well on the floor, so, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to vote it. I think it's just an understood thing that if things are clarified, the delegate has the ability to.
I guess I would say that I think that we've got the clarity here, you know, of what the vote is. And the fortunate thing is, is it sounds like at least three of us are probably going to be there in the room. So if we needed to kind of quick go, oh, this really changed and remember this is what, we have the opportunity of being able to at minimum, you know, kind of bounce it off of a couple of us to get a temperature read. But I think we, I mean, for the most part, one, you know, one through four, we were pretty much all in agreement. And even five and six, we've really, we've hashed through what our issues or concerns were, whatever. So I think, I think we're pretty good.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for sticking with these. Moving on, acceptance of donations and gifts. We only have one this evening. TJ S. Corporation offers supplies for the district in the amount of $1,000.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is approved. Reports of school committee subcommittees. Seeing none. Members forum. Mrs. Matthews.
I have reviewed the warrant and just asked that someone please sign it for Mr. Diaz.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? For members forum, nothing else? Jess, anything to add? Thank you for your feedback earlier. Okay. Enter down a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Mrs. Ryan. Oh, any discussion? Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned at 9:29. Thank you.